Call to order, regular board meeting for March nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Roll call please.
Here.
Mr. Italian.
Here.
Here.
Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. It's good to see you. At least you're inside and warm and dry. At this time, I'd like the members of the board to look over the regular meeting minutes for February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. If there are no additions or corrections, I need a motion of approval.
Second.
Mr. Peretto.
Yes.
Mr. Italian.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Murba.
Yes.
Dr. Lynch.
Yes.
Mrs. Alford.
Yes.
Mr. Sarver.
Yes. Under recognitions and comments from visitors, we're going to start out with recognitions, and this is, this is my favorite part of the board meeting. I'll be very honest. I say this every year, every month, but I'll be honest with you, when we can, you know, honor the achievements of our students, faculty and staff, that is definitely the highlight for me. And tonight, we're going to honor twenty-two individuals. From music, to athletes, to sponsors, to teachers, to coaches. And it's just, it's just a good evening. We're going to start out with the choir and the band. Our choir directors, Natalie Varuki, and Jeremy Stevens is our band director. And we have state honors from the ILMEA conference. At this time, I'd like to introduce the student honoraries from the ILMEA conference. When I call your name, please come up, meet the board, and we have a certificate of achievement for you. Mr. Alton Beck, All-State Jazz Band, bass trombone. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Victoria Campbell, Future Music Educator Seminar. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nathan Ruiz, All-State Choir, tenor I. Congratulations, great job.
Nice job.
You're great.
Great job.
Congratulations, Noah.
McKenna Fanning, All-State Band, bass clarinet. Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Christian Lindberg, Honors Chorus, bass I. Congratulations, great job.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
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 Nathan Leffers, Honors Chorus, bass II. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, well done.
Sorry. You owe me off my game.
Good job.
Thank you.
Their teacher, Mrs. Natalie Varuki is ill this evening. She's not here. Still give her a round of applause. Our band director, Mr. Jeremy Stevens. Again, great job.
Much appreciated.
Great job.
You.
Nice job.
You.
Next up is our girls bowling team. The end of the fifth in state, but that is just the end of it, the crescendo. They started as a four-time conference champion. They have not lost a dual meet since twenty twenty-one. So four years they've been undefeated in the conference in dual meets, and along the way, Cameron Asapinski bowled a three hundred, you know, and she also finished eighth in the state. So what a great year for our girl bowlers. And since we're so young, I can only anticipate that we'll be back here next year doing the same thing. At this time, I'd like the bowlers to come forward if you're called. Kaylee Harper. Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Nice job, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Caitlin Miller. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Evelyn Miller. Milton, Evelyn Milton, excuse me. Not here. Cameron Asapinski. Congratulations, great job. And I bowled a three hundred once. It took me three games.
Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Cameron Para, who's also the birthday girl today. It is her birthday. Happy birthday. Congratulations, happy birthday.
Congrats, happy birthday.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, happy birthday. Should be a St. Pat's birthday, look at her red hair.
Adia Petrie.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Well done, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Annalise Ricky. Congratulations.
Nice job, congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations. Leah Ricky. Do you want this order? Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Assistant Coach Jeff Miller. Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Assistant Coach Kristy Leaks. Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, congratulations. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Head Coach Erin Gunther.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice job, Coach.
Thanks.
Great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Nice job, Gunther.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, on the, on the girls wrestling, Kaylee Damianic, Damianic. Wait, wait a second. Wait, wait a second.
Oh, you can stay there.
You can stay right there. She's a two-time qualifier for the state. Qualified as a freshman and this year as a junior. This year she finished fifth with a thirty-four and four record, three of her losses to wrestlers that placed higher than her in the state. She's the first medalist for girls wrestling in LP, LP school history. Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Well done, congratulations.
Great job.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Congratulations. Assistant Coach Nolan Keeney.
Congratulations, thank you, appreciate it. Nice job, Coach, thanks. You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Assistant Coach Rock McKnight. Great job.
Thank you. Nice job.
Good job.
Assistant Coach Lucas Burris. Great job.
Congratulations. Nice job, Coach.
Great job.
Nice job.
Great job. Head Coach Matt Repples.
Congratulations.
Red's great job.
Can I put the picture with the bandage on her head on the screen in the hallways from the wrestling?
It's like.
We'll do.
Okay.
Great job.
Green light. Nice job, Coach.
Green light, I like that.
Great job. Another round of applause for honoraries.
Okay, all our honoraries, we're going to do some photos.
Oh, yeah.
Sally, is there, is there anything that you're, that's being done new this year professionally?
I mean, we bring new people in. Been a pretty, pretty good speaker today, just saying. Um, his name was Bezy. Um, but it is, brings some music inspirational, not eight million dollars, fifteen hundred. That's. The company's through Ohio, but he could be through Chicago. We had so many today, like one would came from Madison, Wisconsin, some like, Milwaukee, not Madison. Um, I think he was, I think he was coming from Chicago. But, I mean, drove to Ottawa, so driving to, nothing. So, but yeah, just. Don't mind me. We had a band today that did, they had classical, they're called Classical Blast, and they had some string instruments and they went, it's from Bach to rock and the kids just went crazy how they can play on, you know, because some of the, you know, some of those instruments, kids are, yeah, they were fun.
Are all of the events or the activities during the school day or the evening events?
Uh, the evening event is Friday night, our kid student talent, like the, like a talent show Friday night, but everything is during the day.
Is that the talent show, is that in the gymnasium?
No, it's in, everything's in the auditorium.
How many seats does your auditorium hold?
Eight hundred and ninety-two.
That's yes. You know, you know, I have never been in the theater at Ottawa.
Well, it's, it's too, it's got the balcony as well, which is nice. Like when we go to places for speech, they have these beautiful auditoriums, maybe seat four hundred, five hundred, you know? But there's really, we don't have the sides like you do here, but the sides aren't the best seats, so. So how many good seats do you have in, in your auditorium?
That's kind of unique to both of our, both of our buildings, right? Kingman, Matheson, Howard Fellow.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's, it really is remarkable.
Yeah, like, yeah, we, like Rochelle is a lovely new building. I don't like it. There's no feel to it. Like you walk in here, there's a feel. You walk into Ottawa, there's a feel, there's tradition, or you walk, yeah. You, you walk into Rochelle, it's, it's like, mm, and Yorkville's beautiful.
Yeah.
No feel. No feel. So.
No, I think we're fortunate that our communities have been so supportive of maintaining.
And renovating and, yeah, I agree. I agree.
Well, I love your courtyard, you know, and, uh, because I remember when it was still open.
Me too.
You know, and I did when it was enclosed, I mean, to me it just added a whole other level. Well, there's a safety stand.
When I started working there, it was a parking lot.
That's right.
Oh, really?
I forgot that at one point.
It was a parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, though, even though it's enclosed in glass, she's a little brisk.
Well, you get, you get a wind tunnel through there?
Well, it's just cold, it's not heated. Yeah, it's.
Oh, and, and the pass, the breezeway?
The, the, yeah, the bottom.
Bottom one.
Bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a little brisk.
So, because you can get to all of your buildings, extensions indoor, right? Does no one have to walk outside?
Well, no, for our Ag building.
Oh, the Ag buildings, yeah, across the.
Ag building and autos, right?
West side, east side?
East side.
Yeah.
Ag and autos.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, that's it. Nah, everything else you can get on the inside. I can't wait. I can't wait to hear. I can't wait to hear. Oh. His son's here. I spy with my eye, your son, Scotty. I spy with my eye. Oh, there's April, I didn't see April. I spy with my eye, both of your children.
Okay, tonight, for our divisional spotlight, we have our CTE program. Mr. Andrew Wisniewski has students here to give a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to talk about not only our PLTW engineering class, but also our CAD class. Luckily enough, joined by a number of students kind of from every walk of life as far as those classes go. I have Mr. Noah Ruiz, who you've already met, who's an amazing musical and choir person, kind of cannot compete with them. Also Ben Nichols, right, Nicholson, Nicholson, sorry, my apologies, Jameson Hill, and then Ian Atkins. So you're going to be hearing from them very shortly about kind of their specific classes that I've kind of put on them. But just kind of do a brief, quick overview. If you are not aware of Project Lead the Way, it is a nonprofit organization that deals in STEM curriculum. Mainly kind of their big bread and butter is engineering. They also do things like computer science, which Mr. Beerik is here, is teaching the PLTW computer science classes. So they kind of cover everything. They even go down into elementary schools and middle schools to where they kind of bring students up into an engineering mindset that really helps develop them into more well-rounded individuals. We focus, at least on my end, on the engineering side, so it's kind of fun. The great thing about it is their approach that they have us go with, which is an activity, project, problem-based learning approach. So I typically don't have to do things like this where I'm standing in front of a bunch of people talking at them. It does happen every now and then, but for the most part, we go through different small activities and slowly build on it until we do major projects at the end of each kind of section. This allows the students to kind of see the skills evolving over time and kind of bring everything together in a nice way at the end. Right now, here, what we have as far as a pathway for engineering students is they start out as freshmen in our Essentials of Engineering class, move into Intro to Engineering, and then from that point, they can kind of split. Typically, we see them go into Principles of Engineering and then into Civil Engineering and Architecture. Uh, they can kind of go either way on that. So if they're more interested on the civil side or the architectural side, they can jump right into that and really get their hands in with that. Both of those classes I like to see lead into CAD where we can take those skills that they've learned and really refine them down in the CAD programs that we work with as they are a major part of any kind of engineer, architect, kind of all over those areas. It also is very nice to watch their skills really kind of evolve from what you see in the engineering class to a more kind of four-star kind of CAD method. Again, this just kind of runs down Essentials of Engineering, really it is learning the basics, kind of a great overview of all the different engineering kind of career paths that they can go into. Intro to Engineering Design gets into the designing where they are figuring out how to actually make stuff and problem solve through issues that they run into. Principles of Engineering, we really hit the math hard on that and go into the mechanics of engineering and learn how things kind of interact with each other. Civil Engineering and Architecture is looking at the world around us, homes as well as city development and commercial architecture. And I have it listed twice. Uh, that is supposed to be the CAD one where it talks about the fact that in CAD, they are able to get dual credit with IVCC as well as get a taste of all the different styles of CAD. It's not just 3D modeling, it's not just 2D, it's not just architecture, it's them learning how to work in all those programs at the same time. So quickly to kind of go over Essentials of Engineering, again, it is learning the basics, learning the design process, getting their feet wet in that whole kind of field. We look at everything from simple circuits to 3D modeling to block coding, which is kind of the beginner's way of programming computers, programming robots. A little bit into civil art, uh, the world of civil with redeveloping not only interstate exchange ways, but taking a shopping center and redeveloping it to fit more of a futuristic lifestyle. And all this is designed around teams and design challenges where it's on the students and I kind of put them in competition with each other, which tends to bring out the kind of drive, we'll say. Uh, but the big one in all these classes is the design process. This is a method of thinking of figuring out what the issue is, coming up with a plan to fix it, kind of refining those ideas down into a usable method, constructing and testing prototypes, evaluating how those prototypes worked out and whether or not things need to be changed, and if they do, kind of redeveloping them in a new way. And then the big one like this is presenting to the audience, and they have to learn how to take the complex ideas of engineering and bring it into a world that the average person can understand, because you can say all the Tencent words you want, but if people don't understand it, there's no point in even talking. So one of the big projects in Essentials is an emergency survival kit. We look at natural disasters and what the human body needs to kind of survive over a 3D period, and also take into account the idea of you just went through a horrible experience. We want to make sure that this kit is allowing you to live in some comfort. We're not going to be able to solve everything, but at least we can take away the biggest worries of what am I going to do for food, what am I going to do for drinking water, and can I kind of clean myself up? Not only do they 3D model it, but then we also go into building a physical kind of scale model bit to see how everything fits together and whether or not if we take it and kind of shake it up, what's going to happen. Is it perfect? No, but it gets them into the idea of designing and thinking about the whole system, not just does it look cool. This is personally one of my favorites. It's looking at a shopping center. You can kind of see it in there a little bit faded out, but it's the idea of we are moving into the future. Things like automated vehicles are going to become a reality. We can take something that's kind of outdated, and the example I use in class is Peru Mall. Right now Peru Mall is kind of hanging on by a thread. We can take that whole area and redevelop it into something new. I like to go with the idea of turning it into a retirement facility where people can have apartments built into the stores and have basically their own community inside of there so that if it's weather like we, we have today, they won't miss a doctor's appointment. They won't miss going to the store. They don't have to worry about calling a family member to come pick them up, to take them out. Everything's kind of contained in there. Then we could take the parking lots and turn them into parks, places for them to walk. Also, it helps with the idea of watershed. We have a lot of storm runoff in those areas, so being able to have that water get absorbed back into the ground is a big thing. And you can kind of see, it's not as bright as what I was hoping, but you can kind of see a little bit of the redevelopment that one of the students did this year. Cutting out a lot of the parking lots and turning them into fields and minimizing the roadways for those automated vehicles. Now, I'm going to pass it on.
In Intro to Engineering, we take a deeper dive into the design process and even learn how to, even learn concept sketching and how to use calipers. We also collect data and we go even further into 3D modeling. Our first, uh, unit, we design a fling machine and then we track the data and organize charts to then create a carnival game that we present to the babysitter's class in the Dolan Building.
Early childhood development.
Then we do reverse engineering where we take apart, uh, an everyday item and document all the parts. And then we model it in CAD. And then we model it in CAD and try to develop an updated and more improved version. This year, we did flashlights. And then our final unit is we get to design a chair. We identify a chair in the school that we feel is uncomfortable or we just don't like where it's at, and we try to redesign it and make it more comfortable or just a better fit for the area. We go around and interview other students to get their opinion on what they think would be better for that area. And then we get measurements, try to make the chairs accessible to all types of people. And then we go on the computer and model them, and then we finally get to build them using a budget. And then Mr. W.'s favorite part, he gets to stress test the chairs after all the headache we give him throughout the year.
I'm happy to say that no chair has lasted more than seven minutes.
And then for Principles of Engineering, it builds heavily upon Intro to Engineering, except we work in with more complex projects and we bring more like programming and a lot of math back into it. So we actually look at the more engineering, like job aspect side of things, what you would do as an engineer. One of the first things we do is robotics programming, which we start out with making little cars that we can control from the buttons on top. Or one of my favorites was we had ones with sensors where if it would detect something in its path, it would turn and move away from it, which incorporate a lot of coding and different statements. And this was our big project for that unit was we designed a claw machine, which is about a thousand different things all coming together. And then we moved into hydraulics, which we just finished where we got to build.
I had a feeling that was going to happen.
We had to build some hydraulic arms, which was another one of my favorite projects because it brings into, brings into view like a very major engineering aspect, especially in the industrial world.
It's fun to play with.
You don't drop it.
Did I skip this slide?
Alrighty. Next is Civil, and this takes into account the actual like personal side of it where it's like residential and commercial. So this is your school buildings, like one of these or a normal house. We learn different types, which is commercial and residential. But first, we start with actual Civil Engineering and Architecture, which is, which is identifying different styles of architecture. So you can see here there's Spanish style and there's like a whole entire grid of styles that you could do. I think it's like a six by five. And that will be our first unit is making slides about three of the different architect, or styles of architecture that you can build. And out of the three, we choose one to make into an actual model, and that is one of our first units. And then after that, when it's the second half of the first semester, we begin going to 3D CAD software like Revit. This includes our personal design projects. So we learn through PLTW how to use Revit and create dimensions and everything on it. And that, we use that to then go into our kind of like final for the semester, which is a client house. So we ask a teacher sort of questions that, of what house they want to be built, and then we model it on the computer to look something like this. And it's really cool because you can do so many things with it. You, first, it's an unlimited amount of square feet. So if you really want, you could make a mansion, or you can make a tiny shed. But the amount of rooms that you could have, also unlimited. We can have a kitchen, six closets, five bedrooms, 12 bathrooms, a garage, a basement even. And we can make it any story we want, and so this helps us with creating residential. A part of this, we learn how walls are kind of made. So everything that goes into a wall, like insulation, weatherproofing, and the actual wooden outside or the exterior. We also learn that with roof, with asphalt chingles and weatherproofing there too. And in this semester, we go more into the commercial side of things. So we observe building and land codes of, say, Illinois, and we do calculations of stresses in large builds. So we get into the cost assessments and really material stuff, so again, numbers. And we make pretty much this. And this is going to be a unit that we work on pretty much all of the semester, kind of like simultaneously. And so this helps us learn everything we need to do. It shows us difference, the difference between residential and commercial walls. It shows us, we, oh, sorry. We also, and this is a separate unit we are just going over, we do field surveying. So I think just Tuesday, no. Last Friday, we spent our class period surveying the land out there and finding out the distance between everything and getting all the numbers so that we can pretty much simulate how it's going to look if we put something like, see this warehouse here. And that warehouse actually is our, part of our project. So our project is Keystone Library, and this takes place in Indiana. So we have to go over the building land codes of Indiana. And so every place is different, so we always have to look at that.
Alright, I'm going to introduce our CAD program. In our CAD program, we start off learning hand sketching, sketching by hand. It's not done as much anymore, but it's still very useful for learning the fundamentals of dimensioning and drafting your sketches and knowing what you are making and how to make it. We also work with, we work in our program called Inventor, which is a 3D modeling software. However, this program does expand and teach us how to use many different kinds of 3D modeling programs to move on in our career futures. As well, we also get dual credit via our AutoCAD program, which is two-dimensional modeling. We get dual credit with IBCC. We also get OSHA certified by taking a 10-hour general certification course, which can help us get a job in the CAD area in the future. We also competed in the IBCC Edible Car Contest, which helped us just, I'm not sure if you can see it there, but we 3D modeled each of our individual cars in the CAD class. So instead of just building our cars, we also had to detail model them and get them presented for the judges of the contest. We work at Inventor a lot, which is, like I said before, a 3D modeling program. We also work with 3D printing, which also leads into tolerancing, which is making sure that your parts will fit together after they've been printed. A lot of things can change when you 3D print them, so you need to predict how they're going to behave once you print them out so that they can still fit together. Because in the program, everything fits perfectly, but that's not how it is in real life. We also collaborate with the interior design class to create custom furniture, which helps us work with clients to understand how working with them will be, what we can do to compromise with them, and just how it is going to be in future careers in the CAD area, because we will be working with clients a lot in our jobs. AutoCAD, like I previously mentioned, is a 2D modeling software. We do technical drawings in it. We also can create floor plans for houses, which leads into Revit, which is a residential home design 3D modeling software. Using the collaboration with creating the furniture we made with the interior design class, we can input these into custom-made houses in Revit, which helps us learn how to design a house and flow everything together and generally learn into more architectural side. But it's not as specific and detailed as the Civil Engineering class.
I'm going to finish it off with one more kind of shout out to the Edible Car Contest. One, it's been something that I've done with the CAD class ever since I started here, and the students have always been fantastic at it. Not only do their designs really kind of work out nicely, but the big thing is their personality and their kind of respectfulness with other schools. This year, there was over 200 people at the Edible Car Contest. There was around 60 middle school cars, so it's very hard to win a competition when you are going up against that much competition. They still have a good time, they are very respectful, they kind of cheer everybody. This year, Ben and Jamison got second place for the high school in design, which I thought was pretty good. The car that you see on there is my personal car. I decided to go with a Flintstone style with the Flintstones vitamins because I'm weird like that. I did get second place for the teacher faculty design. I'm still terrified of the Twinkie car that I am constantly being told about. It's going to make a comeback and just demolish us all, so I'm really waiting on that. I do want to give one, a shout out to the students. I mean, they are what makes these classes fun for me. I really enjoy it, and their excitement and what they can do and just the evolution of what they're able to model. I mean, this was done by Ian back there, but it's a fully kind of modeled out and almost working flashlight. We're going to be wiring it up and kind of putting an LED into it, starting actually tomorrow. But you can see between the flashlight that I showed before and this, the refinement of the skills that they are getting as they are moving through these classes. And I want to give one more shout out to Mrs. Skoma out there. It was kind of her idea to do the collaboration between the interior design class and the CAD class. And it was, I enjoyed it, and I want to say at least most of the students enjoyed it. And I'm looking forward to, we're actually going to be starting in the next week or so with the next group of students. My CAD kids are the same, but it's a fresh group of clientele that they get to work with. So it's really exciting to see kind of the evolution of what they have done. I'll ask the normal question, any questions for me?
Great job.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, tonight under public comment, we have some speakers that signed up to talk. How this works, you get five minutes to present. At four-minute mark, we'll tell you you have one minute left. We appreciate if you keep it five minutes or less, because we have a full agenda. This is a business meeting, we have things going on. But with saying that, I will tell you, the Board of Education is very interested in what you have to say. So take your time, relax. Nobody up here is going to hit you in the head, just relax. Just come up, you know, talk and have a conversation with us. First speaker, Alexander Crane. That's fine, wherever you feel comfortable.
Good evening, members of the board. I know it's not in tonight's agenda, but I'd like to speak about the matter of Mr. Horton. Coach Horton, or as many know him, Senior Horton, is by far the best teacher and coach I've ever had. I've known him nearly since he came to the area, as I met him during the soccer summer training in my freshman year. He's by far one of the most trustworthy, honest, chill, caring, respectful, and compassionate people that I've ever met. He's one of those people that you know that you can talk to and count on at any time. He connects with his students and players and makes you feel like you can trust him. He's passionate about his job as a teacher and coach, and it's quite easy to tell that he really enjoys what he does. Wherever he is, he adds such a positive energy all the time. As a teacher, he makes class fun and enjoyable. He teaches Spanish in the best way, speaking only in class. Though no matter what, he makes sure you understand what is, what he's saying before continuing. He spends a lot of time preparing activities to make learning the language not feel boring or tedious. Sometimes we'll go out into the hallway, needing to remember a phrase, and then report it back to our partner who writes it down. We do review games where we group up and compete against each other. Other times, we do around the world, which might be one of the best and most fun ways to review things I've ever done. Also in class, he has music idly playing in the background, which makes it a bit, it makes it a bit louder when we have work time, which is a lot better than just silence would be. One of the best things about his class as well is that he rewards you stickers. When you win a competition or do a test, he gives you a sticker. While it's a small thing, it makes his class really unique. He encourages everybody in the class to participate and learn. He's always understanding and lenient about everything. I can also tell that he puts time and effort into his lessons plan to make them as enjoyable as possible. I do not think that we've enjoyed the class as much as he has. And as a coach, he embodies every single aspect of being one and more. For one thing, he knows just the right way to be able to push you to higher levels. He gives us tough activities that challenge us but also improve us. He recognizes when we are struggling and offers to help. And he seems to always know how to help each person on the team just the right way. He also is an amazing coach because he'll often do the drills and activities with us, whether it's conditioning, ball control, scrimmaging, anything, he will nearly always join us. During games, he is quick to point out details we may have not noticed on the field. He gives us suggestions on how to tweak what we are currently doing if needed and always helps. His ways of doing so are unique and really make his style of coaching something special. His passion for the game as a whole is apparent as well, and he really enjoys being coached so much. Without him, I probably would not have worked harder to prepare for this year. Heck, I might have never even played the game this year. But something with him just pushed me to find a new level of my ability. He saw something within me that I didn't see within myself, and I've never had another coach do that. He's definitely my favorite coach of all time. Horton is overall a very likable person. In my opinion, he might be one of the best staff members here at LP, and I really do not want to see him go. I think that most people at LP could agree on that. And also, no matter what, I'd still be around him next couple of years, and he would still be just as important to me as he is now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alexander. Gianni Bearcani.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Mr. Horton. When I first walked into a high school, I was very terrified of world language because it's just, it's like stepping into the darkness. But as soon as I went to Mr. Horton's room, it all went away because of the calm, tranquil environment. You know, like the soft music playing in the background and the fun activities we get to do. And I think a key point of his outstanding performance is how he's able to teach all of us Spanish while only speaking Spanish, which takes a lot of effort and time. But it was, it still paid off, you know, it's taught all of us how to really come together and all that. And I think that depriving the students of such an outstanding, very generous person such as Mr. Horton would be a mistake. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gianni. Lily, and I can't really read the last, Higgins?
Yes.
Okay.
First, I would like to start with, I made a petition. I was going for 100 people to sign. There's 213 people that have signed this petition for him to get back and for him not to be fired or resigned at all. And I'm going to start with my speech. I am Lily Higgins. I am currently the barstool keeper at the school. I have a disability and I struggle with it both at school and on the soccer field. I have great things to say about Mr. Horton. He understands my challenges and makes an effort to be knowledgeable about me and my disabilities, offering comfort and support during difficult times. He treats me like the other students, which I appreciate. In fact, he is one out of the two teachers that I trust fully. Because of my disabilities, I often find it hard to trust adults, and in a year, Mr. Horton has built a bond and respect with me that no teachers have built in three years. From what I have witnessed firsthand, Mr. Horton handles the athletes and his students well, very well. well, very well, and very, very good. He cares deeply about each individual and always strives to be a positive role model, especially in tough times. He often lifts spirits, and he often lifts our spirits and our thoughts and of his students and athletes considerably. Mr. Horton respects not only his students and athletes, but also their personality and team boundaries. He has often, I have never seen a more proactive coach and teacher. It would be such a shame if you took away an influence and optimistic person from me and the team and the students. He is a great leader and support system in the classroom and on the field. And in our community. Today, I hope in speaking to you that I hear all, that you hear all the upbeat things I have to say about Mr. Horton and take them to part and realize how vital he is to our community and school. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Nathan Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll speak loud enough so you can hear me from here. Thank you, esteemed board members. Appreciate your time and being here. Mr. President, it occurred to me that, as I looked around this room and saw these young people, I realized this is probably their first exposure to the process and procedure of governance. I think it's fantastic from here. More importantly, I think it's incredible that I didn't hear a single phone alert or phone call go off. That has to be historic somewhere. Mr. President, I'd also acknowledge that the students who spoke in front of you today, that have been very nerve wracking, and I commend them for their courage to do so. And I applaud them for their efforts and for doing that. With that said, Mr. President, I'd like to just ask the question of, how many folks here are here to represent their support for Mr. Horton? Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to acknowledge the show of hands, that the overwhelming number of folks here in support of Mr. Horton, and enter the end of the meeting record. With that, I go back my time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to all the speakers. Very well done. Next on the agenda is the president's report. And tonight, we go over the superintendent's evaluation. The board evaluated Dr. Robleski for the 2004-2005 annual evaluation. Summary of the evaluation, an overall excellent evaluation with a 3.8 rating out of a four. Dr. Robleski meets or exceeds all five goal areas of the superintendent's performance goals. Evaluation ratings are high in all areas, but the strongest in finance, community relations, board relations, and finance. Educational programs is a concern for the board with the recent low achievement scores. Goals and objectives from the evaluation. We'd like to see Dr. Robleski work with faculty and staff to establish strategies to strengthen or instructional programs to improve student achievement. Increase delegation of duties to qualified personnel to help transition smoothly upon retirement. Continue to build community partnerships to enhance educational programs and facilities of the district. Continue to update short-term and long-term maintenance schedules and plans. The board would also like to see continued to practice of planning and gap analysis to assist in the incoming superintendent upon retirement. Upon that, we'd like to see documented systems in finance, educational programs, personnel, human resources, and facility management. Nice job, Dr. Robleski.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Star, members of the board, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, under finance. Any motion to approve the bills and payroll for LaSalle Pre-Talmadge High School?
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. Any motion to approve the bills and payroll for the LP Area Career Center?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver? Yes. Any motion of approval for the payroll report?
So moved.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 7.2 financial records. Any motion of approval of financial records as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani? Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. There was no correspondence this evening on the board committee reports. 9.1 Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Ferrari.
The Building and Grounds Committee met nine days ago on Monday, March 10th. First spoke about the summer work projects that will be done under the Health, Life, and Safety Bonds. And at this time, we were, or at least at that time, the meeting, we were still waiting for approval on the projects by ISBE. Other than that, they're all scheduled to take place this summer. That includes some work on the main building, the east building, the Dolan building, the sports complex. And once we get the okay from ISBE, those are a go. We discussed an update on the agriculture building. Some site visits are going to be scheduled. Some of them may have taken place by now. At, look at the buildings in Pontiac, Seneca, Putnam County, and Kewanee. And the superintendent said they hope to have those site visits accomplished by the end of this month. The next design team meeting is scheduled for the 31st. And so obviously, they want to get those visits done before that meeting. There's a board coffee scheduled next Monday, the 24th, with the president and vice president of this board at the Utica Village Hall from 5:00 till 6:30. Current updates, the freezer and produce cooler in the kitchen have been updated. And they are now working on the meat cooler. Bleacher motor mount replacement will be done during spring break. At the same time, they are working on the new retractable basketball hoops in the gym. Also during spring break, they're going to be going through Phase 1 of the remodel of the old dishwasher room to remodel it for the sip and savor. And we're still waiting on an inspection for the Dolan elevator building. And I believe that's scheduled to take place this coming weekend. The chiller in the boiler house apparently had a capacitor leak, which is not uncommon after a certain number of years. The unit is over five years old, and Mr. Tomonello is working on getting that replaced. The ancil system in the kitchen has been updated. That's the fire suppression system that you'll find in any commercial kitchen. And they are in the process of hiring a new custodian for the second shift. And that completes the discussion that took place last Monday.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ferrari. Finance committee, Mr. Merba.
We met on Tuesday, March 11th. We reviewed the financials that were in your board packet and discussed those thoroughly. We're 66.7% of the way through the school year. Revenue year versus year is on target. We've received 84.07 of our revenue, and expenses are at 76.25%. There are a couple of things that will need modified and adjusted in the budget, but those things we're all aware of. We also then discussed the beverage vendor replacement plan, and the coke contract expires in July, and we're looking for other options for that. The fee recommendation, the 2025-2026 fee recommendation is in the board packet, and we did approve that and recommend that that be placed on the agenda. We talked about fiscal year 2026 budget updates. Obviously, there's some moving parts with this next year's budget, so we discussed them. CPPRT, we expect it to be down 10 to 15% from this year. But likely, the way to think about it is that's probably pretty close to back to pre-COVID levels, is what we expect. The mandated categoricals, they're gonna be down 10, 5, 5 to 10%. The evidence-based funding formula, we expect level funding from the state, we're hopeful. And the local levy will know in April or May. So, but it does look positive with the local levy. Then we discussed that the team was meeting on March 13th regarding the fiscal year 2026 staffing. And so I'm assuming that meeting was had.
Yep.
And so we'll be hearing more of that in the future. We also discussed the Series 2025 Bond Update and the issues we're having with the approval from ISBE and a couple of the items in that. We also approved the request to let bids for bread, milk, and pizza. And then on other, we talked about the purchase of the Smart Pass, which is an online system tracking student passes throughout the buildings. And Dr. Robleski explained some of the ins and outs of that program, and it seems very beneficial. And that was our meeting.
Okay. Are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Merba. Administrator reports, superintendent's report, Dr. Robleski.
Thank you, Mr. Sarver. I do have an update for the staffing update. Based on our enrollment numbers, we're not looking to add any additional teaching staff. We're able to maintain our numbers. So that also means there will be no recommendations to reduce outside of sort of our annual grant-funded programs. But probably the one key staffing recommendation, which is on the agenda for this evening, is a recommendation to enter into a memorandum of understanding with our teachers' union. Based on the great growth that we've seen in the girls' wrestling program and what our numbers are looking like next year, we're at a point that we need to be able to, I guess when I say branch off, need to be able to carve out and create its own program. So there's a couple of parts to the MOU. One is to recommend taking the existing language in the contract, which actually just says head wrestling coach and assistant wrestling coach. We're gonna rename that head boys wrestling and then assistant boys wrestling. And then to create a head girls' wrestling coach and an assistant girls' wrestling coach. Both women's positions will be placed on the same par level as the men's as well. So the head will be at level 2, and then the assistants will be at level 4, so ensuring parity in both programs. But we're very, very, very excited as we got to see tonight some of the outcomes of Coach Rebholz and Coach Keeney and Burris and McKnight's work. The, two other things. We have an early childhood playground update. Been in contact with Vernon Jones. We're looking at late March, early April to finish the punch list items. It's weather-related right now that there is. If you recall, that one of the rubberized pad, before it was cured, someone stepped through it. And so those footsteps are still there. They're gonna take that out, re-pour it. But even temperatures can't be below 40 degrees for that to properly cure. So we're waiting for that to happen. And then there's a couple other odds and ends. And then we'll be looking at before the end of the school year then to have our official ribbon cutting. And then lastly, we received a FOIA request from between last month and today. It was from GFL Environmental, and they had requested a copy of our current trash and recycling contract with Republic Services. And we complied with that request within the five-day period. That's all I have, was our questions.
Thank you, Dr. Robleski. Thank you. Principal report, Mrs. Cushing's not here this evening. Her report is in your packet. Athletic director's report, Mr. Hanson.
Good evening. I don't have a lot this month. Since we met last time, we did put a lid on the winter season. So as we saw tonight, we had our bowling and wrestling team here, also our boys' basketball team won their second regional championship in a row. So kudos to them. Spring sports are underway. Five of our six teams have started. Mother Nature won today. We're in the process of rescheduling right off the bat. But baseball, softball, boys' and girls' track, and soccer, girls' soccer have all competed already this spring. And then tennis will start in a couple of weeks. And on the activity side, we had a lot going on last month. Just two quick highlights was Cavs Day was last week. It was a huge success. So thank you to Mrs. Navarro and Mrs. Kualchek for putting on a great time for our kids and learning experience. And then also, last weekend was the musical again, and that was another great performance by Mrs. Veruki. So that's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Director of ACC's report, Dr. Lang is not here this evening. His report is also in your packet. Director of Communications, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. I guess I'll start off first jumping on with what Mr. Hanson was talking about, with Mean Girls, the spring musical, since, you know, we oversee the tickets. All that process going through, or the dispersment now to get the money back from our online ticketing group. But I just looked at the numbers, and we had right around 1,450 tickets either sold or were our faculty, staff comp seats. So we had quite a few people come out to see the show, and really heard good things about it. I know when I went, it was great. So there's that. And then just the last little reminder is that LP Foundation Trivia Night is coming up Saturday, April 5th at Seneca's Oak Ridge. So start putting your teams of brainiacs together or buy some 50/50 tickets and come out to support the foundation. And the foundation also, I guess, as we're talking about, will be meeting tomorrow on the agenda, among other things, is the spring grant request. So we'll be putting more money back into the school based on the requests of our faculty and staff.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, 11.1. Any motion of approval of the IHSA renewal for the 2025-2026 school year?
Second.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.2, any motion of approval of the 25-26 Sprout Educational Services Contract for Occupational and Physical Therapy Services?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.3, any motion approved for the 2025-2026 school fees?
So moved.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.4, any motion approval to establish an AG program activity fund account?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.5, any motion approval for letting the bids for A, bread vendor for the 2025-2026 school year? B, milk vendor for the 2025-2026 school year? C, pizza vendor for the 2025-2026 school year? D, parking lot restoration project, summer of 2025? E, roof replacement projects, summer of 2025? F, west wing masonry repairs, science wing, summer 2025? G, sip and savor remodel project, summer 2025? And H, main building perimeter lighting project, summer of 2025?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Merba?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.6, any motion approval of memorandum of standing with the LP Federation of Teachers Local 604 regarding the following differential positions. A, renaming head wrestling coach to head boys' wrestling coach. B, renaming assistant wrestling coach to assistant boys' wrestling coach. C, add head girls' wrestling coach, level 2. D, add assistant girls' wrestling coach, level 4.
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Posetto?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?[1763.04]
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.7, any motion of approval of the following retirements with regret. Mrs. Carol Navarro, science teacher and division chair, effective to conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yeah.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.8, any motion of approval for the following resignations. Mr. Jack Murdis, assistant football coach, effective February 20th, 2025. Mr. Jim Shervany, assistant boys golf coach, effective March 6th, 2025. Mr. John Brekovich, first floor custodian, effective March 13th, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.9, any motion of approval of the following appointments. Mr. Pete Secora, volunteer bass fishing boat captain, effective for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. John Vizzetti, volunteer assistant baseball coach, effective for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Jack Wagner, volunteer assistant football coach, effective for the 25-26 school year. Mr. Jack Murdis, volunteer assistant football coach, effective for the 2025-2026 school year. And Mr. David Pigay, volunteer assistant cross-country coach, effective for the 2025-2026 school year.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.10, any motion of approval to rehire the following administrative positions for the 2025-2026 school year. Mrs. Ingrid Cushing, principal. Dr. Chris Gibson, associate principal for teaching and learning. Ms. Kate Lance, associate principal for school safety. Mr. Jason Miller, dean of students. Mr. Steve Hanson, athletic director. Mrs. Jamie Salzar, associate principal for student support services.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.11, any motion of approval of the following probationary certified staff reappointments for the 2025-2026 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbach?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn?
Yes.
Mr. Pacetto?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes. 11.12, any motion of approval for the following staff reduction in force for the 2025-2026 school year. Mrs. Catherine Baker, staff job coach due to financial considerations. Ms. Kristen Derrick, Title I reading paraprofessional due to financial considerations. Mr. Connor Sangston, Title I math paraprofessional due to financial considerations.
Mrs. Alcorn?[1694.71]